I'll be in the air at this time tomorrow. Okay, so the next application is application, well, I don't even know the agenda, 11-2015-S, Morris and Central LLC. Wow, 259-279 Morris Avenue, 7-19 Caldwell Place, 14-28 Center Street, Block 706, lots 10 through 17, for final site plan redevelopment project. As the board is aware, this application was before us back in 2015.
December.
December, and the board approved the development. The applicant, we'll hear from him, is back to make us some changes to the building. So, to be clear, we're only going to focus tonight because we don't have some of the required materials that the subcommittee asked for, just on the engineering of the building, not the look and feel. So, from the board's standpoint, this will be heard. So, if any members of the public, the way that this application's going to go is we're going to let them do testimony. We're going to hold public comments to the next meeting when they have the full testimony, and then we'll open it up to the public for full discussion.
We have three of the four renderings.
What?
Is three not enough?
Well, one, our planner didn't have a chance to review them to make sure that they accurately depict the building, you know, we just got them a few minutes ago. Two, you don't, I believe you don't have the one coming in from Caldwell into the back of the building, is that correct? Because that's the one where I think the board needs it, but let's focus on the engineering because we'll probably leave this for next. So, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, as is the board. My name's Elmar D. Webster. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Inglewood Senior Webster, Richard Scholl and Taylor. This is an amended site plan for 259-279 Morris Avenue, 7-19 Caldwell Place, 14-28 Center Street, also known as Block 706, lots 10 through 17 in Springfield. We've had a number of meetings, and we've gotten comments from a number of the board's professionals, the township planner, we've had a number of letters from him, and a number of emails looking at the issues. I'm going to start tonight with Victor Vinegra from Harbor Group, from Harbor Consultants, who's our projects engineer. He's had a chance to speak to Mr. Disco, I know. So, if we can get Mr. Vinegra sworn in, we'd start the show.
Victor, raise your right hand, buddy. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, considering what you've got?
I do. My name's Victor, middle initial E, last name Vinegra, V-I-N-E-G-R-A, professional engineer, professional planner, state of Jersey, alleged current. I've testified before this board, and over 100 boards in Jersey, over 30 years, very high.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer Mr. Vinegra as an expert engineer. He's also going to be a planner as well tonight.
Anyone from the board have any concerns?
No.
Any questions? Okay, we'll accept your call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vinegra, you've gotten a couple of letters from Mr. Disco, and you've got some materials that you'd like to share with the board.
Okay, just.
Do you need to hold the microphone?
Yes, he needs to speak in the microphone. If you want to use that one, you can.
Mark, this is A1. It's really your sheet number three, layout and dimensioning plan that's enlarged, that's colorized. So, this is A1. A2 is a Google Earth exhibit depicting the lots in question surrounded with a red bowl, which are lots 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 of Block 706. Then I'm going to go to A3, which is a truck turning circulation that was originally submitted with the preliminary, but we have since, sorry, A, Mark, two A4s. A3, which would be the lower level, a rendering of the lower level parking.
I'm sorry, remember, Vic, you lost me there. That's A3?
Yeah, this is going to be A3.
That's the truck circulation?
Sorry, no, no. This is A3, which would be a colorized version of the lower level parking plan, and A4 would be the truck circulation.
Okay. Harvard Consultants?
So, these are just color renderings, this is color renderings of what you have in your set. It was enlarged for the exit. You lay out the dimensioning plan, sheet number three.
They're all layered different from what we want? He just marked A.
A1 is the layout and dimensioning plan.
He just marked A1 through 4. Every one of them is different than what was submitted, so we're just using these for testimony stuff, so we'll keep running with these.
So, what has happened since this application has been before this board over a year ago is this application went down to DEP for parking in a flood zone underneath the building. And over that period of time, there's been some changes in the policy of NJDEP of how they address parking in flood zones. Since that policy changes, we went back, met with DEP, and received approval, but we had to modify the layout. The modifications are that the parking that was under the building in this, in the flood area, has been removed. So, it's no longer permitted by DEP, so parking is no longer permitted in a flood zone on these large-scale residential projects. They still permit parking in flood zones on commercial projects, but not for residential projects. So, there was a parking lot under this area that was since removed. We modified the submittal, we went down to DEP, we met them multiple times, and received approval for this new layout. So, now we're back before you, changes from two agencies. First, again, NJDEP, stream encroachment. Second, is meeting with Public Service Electric and Gas. They do have some main trench electrical lines along Morris Avenue, based on the Proximity Act. And the lack of feasibility with relocating those lines, the building has slid back. So, now the building has moved back approximately 10 feet from the original location up on the property line. It's given the opportunity, we'll go into that later, to have a nicer street presence, and to opening it up for more restaurateurs, cafes, and some outdoor sales, if permitted within the municipality. So, there is some nice benefits to that, being pushed back from the redevelopment plan, but it's also created a lesser of a buffer in the rear, but we'll get into that later. So, the major changes here, parking removed from under the building in this area, now it's surface parking with building over, shifting of the building back because of the Proximity Act with New Jersey PSCNJ, and what has since then created, it was a five-foot rear buffer, that is a requirement in the plan that you can deviate, and that now that buffer is diminished down to almost zero, and I'll go into how we're going to mitigate that. So, that's the plan in A1, we showed that there. And what we have here is really 140 apartments, and the redevelopment plan requires 140 spaces. So, everybody who has an apartment has a assigned space on the project. We have parking here, we're going to be redoing Center Street, it's going to be a diagonal street, we're going to be doing some modifications. I had a discussion today with your board engineer that we may tweak that a little bit, some of the width of the lanes, et cetera. And then whatever parking is left to remain, we're going to sublease from the municipality on a lot diagonal across the street used by motor vehicle. So, during the daytime, it's being used by motor vehicle, and overflow for nighttime for visitors to the apartment buildings and for the retail will be shared. So, the retail parking we have along Morris Avenue, that's available here.
I mean to interrupt you, but the municipal lot you're talking about, we talked about it, it was never signed and never agreed upon. Duffy's Corner was agreed upon, not the lot?
Yeah, we don't have control over what council's going to eventually say. We're going to lease from council, and council's going to tell us where to lease from. I know there was a prior application, I wasn't the testifier in a prior application, but we were being moved around a little bit, but again, both lots are close proximity to this project, so.
The testimonies, you're going to lease the additional parking from a lot that the governing body approves?
Exactly, and at least 45 spaces is what's going to come about. So, right now, we have approximately 21 on-street spaces, we have diagonal parking this way, we have new handicap spaces there. We'll briefly go into the handicap arrangement. We have four spaces here, elevator tower here and here, central to the site. So, what happens is you can come in off of Caldwell, park at the surface lot, there will be a ramp down underground. When you go underground.
Hold on, which sheet is that?
Oh, sorry, I'll jump into sheet A3. We have a handicap space here closest to the elevator corridor, and we have the spaces down underground here. So, what it comes to is 140 spaces for 140 units, so everybody has an allocated space who has an apartment in the site.
Excuse me, does that include the handicap spots in your count?
Yes, you're allowed to include handicaps.
Okay, so, but if you have, in 140 units, you have no need for a handicap spot, what unit is not getting assigned a spot?
That's to be worked out later. We typically do this, I do a lot of these type of developments, and that's the way we count them, that on average, that normally works out that someone takes those handicaps spots. Also, what happens is, these signs are assigned spaces, so if it does get overflow, the last person to lease an apartment, their parking may be here.
Or somewhere.
You know, it's one per, or somewhere within, correct? And I have, on many occasions, walked these projects after they're built, so ones that I've been involved with, and I normally see how they lease these spaces, and I have noticed that, because again, you want the handicap for, especially the ones here, for the visitors. These especially are good for the visitors. Here, they may be wanted to open, yes. And you want them to be open, but not everybody takes the space. What I find is, to go briefly how they operate, after they're built, they're allowed to charge for the spaces on-site. So, the owner of the building's allowed to charge, say, $50 a month for their parking space. Not everybody has a car, and says, "I don't want that." So, then that space opens up. There is a charge, and I didn't always believe that, but after I toured these facilities, a couple in Union County, I got the lease sheet, and I saw there was a charge. So, what happens is, that's the way they control the parking, by charging for it.
Can I, I just want to interrupt, council, do you mind moving the cameras over there in this way that people can see?
Okay.
That are locked in, sorry.
So, the storm, that's roughly where you see, storm drainage is over here out of the flood zone. Another thing is, what's going to come up, and we're going to go through that later, is the street trees. We took them out originally, only because we want to walk the street with representative of public service and with the representative of the municipality, because directly under the lines, when you plant a Bradford pear or another tree, public service comes along in two years and trims it dramatically. I think we have to do cognizant of what we're planting here, we may want to go to some box planters, some small shrubs, instead of street trees along Morris Avenue, because these are main electrical transmission lines, and we find that they over-trim them. So, I think what I'd like to go into, while we're going into the landscaping and the letters later on, I mean, comments later on in the landscapers' letter, whatever we don't plant, we either place in smaller planters, or we can donate to a plant elsewhere in a municipality to make up for it. I think that's the best way to approach a project like this. Also, when the architect finishes working with your board's professionals, I would like to fill this in with some small planter boxes. I can briefly go, that's a brief description of the site, the parking, where the leases may be, the off-street spaces for visitors for the retail. So, you could park in front, Morris Avenue, run in, go shopping, park around a corner, and also, we'll come up with a parking signage plan, so I think it should be signed here. If this fills up, the little sign here will be directed, and that's not on the plan now, but we're going to volunteer to add a parking, additional parking supply across the street. Should be on the building, so as this fills up, which is the natural tendency, as this parking spaces fill up, but hopefully it does fill up, with people going to bite to eat, then they can be directed over here. I'll briefly go into Mr. Disco's letter, it's dated November 10th, 2019. He states in the beginning that we did go down to NJDEP, and we had to modify the structures, and we had to move the building, which reduced the rear yard setback. On page two, he starts numbering his comments under the redevelopment plan review comments, and really, item one is a statement. Item two is a parking breakdown, that this plan was permitted to reduce the residential parking by 40 percent. We're reducing it by 24 percent. So, we had more latitude, but we were over what the redevelopment plan permits, and I think that's good logic, after a couple of years of operating, and when they go to renew the lease, if they don't need the spaces, they can give them back to the municipality, if they do, but that's council's, but right now, they're agreeing to rent 45 municipal spaces. This way, they can play with it as their needs grow. If they need more spaces, they can go back to council, council has control, so. But the parking allocation and the way that it's depicted is within the redevelopment plan drafted by your professional planner. Item three is the overall site is larger than the minimum required by the redevelopment plan. Item four, just makes, it's a statement. Item five, we'll have the architect, he's here tonight to go into the building setbacks that they, again, the building was slid 10 feet because of public service, though. Item six, massing of the building in color renderings is architectural comment, so I'm going to save that for the architect. Item seven, vehicular access is met, and what we did do was take the comments, I'm going to do a little jump from your fire department in a letter, Chief Carlo Palumbo, dated November 5th, 2019. Mr. Palumbo did supply my office on the exact turning radii of your fire equipment. We took Mr. Palumbo's, or not Mr. Palumbo, but the manufacturer of the fire trucks, and we depicted it on the plan. This, I'm referring to A4 now. So, A4 is the layout and dimensioning plan with a fire truck circulation movement. As you can see, the fire truck can move throughout the building and, again, traverse, which, you know, were pretty good, because we have wide driveways. Normally, I do, I work a lot with urban fire departments, that normally, they don't drive around the entire building if there is a fire, they normally come in one end or come in the other end. They do have the ability to move around this site, so we have met your fire department's requirement for fire circulation, so. Talking with your engineer, we felt that, in a brief discussion, I mean, and I've been engineer in Union County for quite some time, doing a little modifications here, maybe tweaking one or two items along Center Street, we can get it even better. And I would like to, if there is a positive recommendation from this board tonight, that it would be that we make certain alignment changes, very minor, to Center Street that would satisfy the board engineer. There would be small radii changes here, and maybe make this space a little less depth so we have a better traveled lane.
Are you proposing that to be a one-way?
Right now, that's what we're showing here. Council would have to approve that.
Yes.
Yes. Again, without council approval, we'd have to come back before this board, so. Yes. And the way this is, is, you know, there's two new ways of looking at angled parking, I do a lot of urban planning, too. Angled parking is a traffic calming. We may want to look in back, there's a new style of angled parking, which is backing into the spaces, we may want to look at that, but I don't want to confuse anyone. I think we keep with this front entry, angled parking, which is more typical, say, the Kennewith Boulevard is one, but the problem with Kennewith Boulevard, it's a county roadway, much more highly traveled, and that's what we have in Kennewith, so I'm the engineer for Kennewith, so. So, that's what we have on Center Street, and we're working with council and your board engineer with that. We do show trees along Center Street, some tree islands that break it up somewhat, but then again, I'd like to have the overall landscape plan approved by your planner, and we do a tree count, whatever we don't plant on-site, we would dedicate to the municipality. I'll go back to the letter. Item four, there is no lot coverage requirement in the zone, so we're okay. Building setbacks, we testified to, and the architect will bring that up. Yeah, it was on the item number seven, vehicular access and movement, and we just, we went through that. Revised, item eight, revised building alignment sacrifices the buffer setback of five feet. That's along this property line. That's the one negative, to I think the benefit of moving the building back, created less of a five-foot buffer. So, instead of, I talked to the applicant, instead of, you know, five-foot buffers from meets rail, and normally, you could get some small ground cover in there and some evergreens with a fence behind it. Instead of that, I spoke with the applicant, at a cost to the applicant, constructing not a wall, but a concrete textured fence, prefabricated fence, to have textures and colors similar to the building. So, they make a precast fence, it's five foot tall, I mean, six foot tall, it's concrete panels, but it's sound deadening, it's light absorbing, there'll be no sound or light getting through that concrete fence.
What is going to be the look for the residential home?
It would be a concrete panel that could look either brick, could look stone panels, so what they would have is something solid there, that it wouldn't have any light protruding from the cars, and would capture sound that would bounce back off towards this development, so it wouldn't go through, even a living fence would travel sound. So, if you had a living fence, which is a row of cedars or arborite, with a wooden fence behind it, even if you back up your vehicles, you can still have exhaust coming out the exhaust and traveling onto the neighboring property. If you put a six-foot tall, typical six-foot tall, but prefabricated concrete fence, they make them better thick, NJDOT builds the big ones, but they build them small, and they make them of any pattern, they make patterned concrete. So, it could be something that's sound deadening, so someone who lives on the other side now doesn't have any odors coming from the vehicles, doesn't have any sound coming from the vehicles, and no stray lighting coming from the vehicles, because the concrete will absorb all that. So, the applicant has agreed to that. It's probably five times you price per linear foot for that type of fence, based on, than a plastic vinyl fence, which I'm really not a fan of, or a wooden fence that does deteriorate, that does have permeable openings in, so that's how we would mitigate that.
He agreed to maintain this fence?
Yes, yes, so.
I think the board will probably have some discussion on the look and feel of the fence with input from our thing, but.
Yes, that would be an architectural look that you could pick, and then we go to the prefabricators, and they would construct the fence.
We'll have to make that decision now.
Correct. Moving on, nine, the street trees along Morris Avenue, as I testified before, because of public service and because they come back within two years and start depleting the tree, I think we should go look, look something more of a ground cover, flower boxes, those types, that type of look. Also, when you use flower boxes, I felt you can move them closer, if council permits, to the curb line. What I like about a flower box closer to a curb line, it stops people from jaywalking, it kind of, it gives you a sense of safety from the street level in, somebody gets too close to the curb, there's a flower box there. We've used them before, and they work quite nicely. Item 10 is a loading dock to be signed and the handicap accessible, we'll add signs to the site, we agree to that. The refuse area, we show it as a 19 by 24, the detail says 1824, we'll change the detail. And if you look at the detail for the refuse area, that is also all concrete block. We're not building a refuse area out of wood fence, we're not building out of chain link fence, it's going to be masonry block with metal doors, so it's a full-time permitted structure. It shows that way in the plans. We're showing ADA spaces throughout the site, and discussion, this was a discussion I had earlier today, that we will make some minor adjustments based on the recommendation of your engineer to the ADA spaces on Center Street to shorten them up a little bit and to tweak the design of Center Street. 13, bollards shown along the northern property line, we're showing bollards again as to keep pedestrian movement from the edge of curb, to make people walk further in from the edge of curb, but I think we make some bollards along with flower boxes, that will be beneficial and keep people, because we have a, we have a big sidewalk now, we have a good-sized distance from the curb, let people walk further from the curb, and it's a little bit safer. 14, the retaining wall, the architect addressed it.
Can you go back and talk about the seating along the front of the development, seating along the bollards, like, moving the building back 10 feet, what's the positive of seating? Because that was discussed.
Again, the flexibility is there now for, say, normally, restaurateurs, they like the corner, the little bit bigger spaces in downtowns, I've done a number of projects in the Cranfords and Westfields and Garwoods, that we give the space here, so now you can have outdoor tables along the front there, so when they do the fit-out, we show a typical door there, but during fit-out, if a tenant comes in and says, "I'd want the whole space and some more openings," that you have enough space on private property to put some tables. So, what you want with the bollards, again, to keep the bollards along the edge of the concrete brick there, so now you have room all within here, for when the tenant comes in, they're looking to do a fit-out, that they have the capability to do so. And a lot of those are normally metal tables, and they're heavier, they don't, you know, you have to make sure that they don't blow away, we've had those situations in the past, so. But it does give you the freedoms and the benefits of being able to have your store in good weather, open up to the sidewalk. So, I guess, and the capability is on both corners, so, you know, if you wanted, a Thai restaurant wanted this spot, Charlie Brown's wanted this spot, you can have two restaurants, again, that complement each other on either corner of the property in the rest of infill development. There's a good amount of retail on this site, I know this site quite well, I grew up in the neighborhood. I think it's a great location for a project of this magnitude, I think it's long been waiting for the town to get something where you get some fresh renters into town, and some fresh folks living in town, that we found to be quite successful in the other towns, the new development, so. The item 14, the retaining wall, we're going to leave that for the architect, because it's an internal retaining wall that's alongside a building. Item 15, we did revise the plans per NJDEP, and again, we, it took a little while, but we do have approval from DEP now. Item 16, some of the underground parking will have runoff that comes down the ramp. The way we're going to handle that is what's called a duplex system, it's two pumps in a precast chamber, one, they cycle on and off, they have an alarm that goes into the maintenance room, when one, if one pump goes down, you have another pump working, we use them in sanitary sewage systems all the time, and the beauty of them, that they cycle, they have a longer life, because one runs, the other one doesn't, and they alternate back and forth. If there is a problem with a lot of pumps, again, there's a light that normally goes off in the maintenance building, replace pump number one, and they come out and replace pump number one. So, we're proposing a duplex system. If this plan is approved, we're going to have to supply the details of that system to your engineer for final sign-off. we're going to supply the details of that system to your engineer for final sign-off. Courtyard landscaping on the architectural, it's a statement about, the board will look into that, as you look into the architectural renderings, how you feel that the rear courtyard works with the development. I'm going to leave that to the architects. Colonial-style lights, street frontages. We haven't, we're going to go into, right now we're, we are not showing streetlights. I want to see the types of lights on the architectural plans. Internally, we're using all LED lights within the parking lot, we have details of those lights. The sconces on the building are really an architectural feature, we'll leave that, the architectural features, sconce lighting over the doorways and such. Item nineteen, applicant should confirm the truck access is available to internal driveways and the revised Center Street, Morris Avenue intersection. As I testified earlier, we performed that, we showed that in the past, but we have upgraded that plan to depict the latest and current fire truck owned by the municipality. Item twenty, that the applicant incorporate, the engineer passed comments, we agree to that. Item twenty-one, that all the increased sanitary sewer flow, we have to get a permit from both NJDEP and from Rowway Valley Sewage Authority for that. But I was out there with your TPW about eighteen months ago. We did do some sewer analysis along, there's a sewer line that runs right under the sidewalk, right under curb, large sanitary sewer, there is capacity in that line, and we, we did some investigation, we televised the line, we also metered the line to make sure there was adequate flow in that line, and that result will be given to the state and given to the Rowway Valley. Your engineer has to sign off our application to Rowway Valley, then Rowway Valley has to sign it, and then it goes to the state.
Could you just give a copy of that to our engineer to review prior to the next year?
Yes.
Mike, you have a review that you have. Okay. Let's have Mike review that prior. Mike, do you think it has to be updated since it's eighteen months, or you think that's, that's fine? Okay.
So, that's about it, and the rest are the architectural plans that we have the architect here tonight. You know, we're going to go too much into that. And we originally had, Keller and Kirkpatrick was your prior engineer, they reviewed the calculations, NJDEP, this does require NJDEP, review of storms, stormwater calculations, because it's over one acre of disturbance. They also signed off on the storm sewer of the site. So DEP reviews the sanitary sewer of a project this size and magnitude, they have to sign off on that along with Rowway Valley. DEP had to review our storm sewer to make sure we did water quality, water quality treatment, they signed off on that. And DEP also reviews the land use division, the stream encroachment, to make sure that the underground parking is not within a flood zone, and they signed off on that. That's why we're back before you, because the changes from those agencies required us to slide that building back.
So if you have, you're going to set a revised stormwater report, maintenance manuals to our.
That's correct, yeah.
And that would be.
Yeah, it'd be the same report that was approved by NJDEP.
Still want him to review?
Yes.
I know their approval supersedes, but still want him to weigh in, make sure it's okay. Anything further?
Not on the engineering now.
Okay. So from the board's perspective, I just feel we'll just work on engineering tonight, and then, do you have anything further to say? So from the board's perspective, I'm going to have it our engineers and planner have some discussion, and then open it up for us to discuss, and then we'll carry it till December fifth, Thursday, in this room. It'd be the first application that night. Keaton, anything? Mike, oh yeah, you can.
Yeah, again, we had two preliminary reviews on this. Harbor Associates incorporated all of those preliminary major comments. Working backwards here, number eighteen, there was a comment about the lighting. We do have an overall scenario where we want to incorporate what the bid has done in terms of the streetscape, so that could be incorporated as, as the architectural of the streetscape development. So.
We will comply with that condition.
I think number fifteen, was it, or there was a gate shut on the ramp, so I just, maybe Victor could talk a little bit about what that deed is, whether it's waterproof, I don't know if it's meant to act to prevent water from coming down in a flood situation, or if it's just a simple access gate for whatever reason.
It's a simple access gate, vertical. Also, those type of gates have a radio frequency override for the fire departments, it's quite common, so they, if they have to access the building for emergency services, there's an override radio frequency. That comment's also in your fire department's letter, it's a requirement. So prior to getting CO, fire department has to come out there and inspect the building.
The applicant's engineer indicated the retaining will be discussed further by the architect. Number twelve was really focused where I wanted to tweak that Center Street design. They've indicated they're okay with that. And I really don't see any other major comments there to discuss. The proposed landscape buffer wall at the Southern Property Line certainly would be subject to what that looks like. It certainly would be more durable than a fence, certainly more durable than a wood fence, so there's that benefit of that. You can make the look of something more decorative than just a plain wooden fence, so subject to be continued.
I think.
Just, just so the board knows, our engineer actually spoke to the property owner, he said to us.
Oh.
Not that only.
Okay.
I'd love to hear from him. Okay, so I think that's, so, so I want to open up the board for some questions, but I, I think, well, go ahead. Andrew?
Well.
Just on engineering.
Right, well, I, I think the big comment from meeting with them in the subcommittee was, by pushing the building back, you're moving further down Caldwell. Now, the notion of the concrete fence is new, and if it's an improvement, then I would expect that the adjacent property owner would appreciate that. But one of the things that, on the subcommittee we looked at, and we discussed with the applicant, just for the rest of the board's certification, was that because we're talking about parking spaces there, moving the building back five feet really doesn't start to encroach on the other properties, the adjacent properties, because it is still open parking space. So that feeling of claustrophobia you might expect when you hear a building is moving five feet closer, really doesn't appear to apply here to the park. Yeah, because it's, because it's open park, so you still have open air between the build, the proposed building and the adjacent property owner.
And if your setbacks aren't impacted.
Right.
Karen? Yeah, this project is like a big puzzle. I don't know.
It's ours too.
Yeah, I don't know, we've been, we've been working on it for a long, long time. I love, I've, I like the pushback of the building, I was, I was, I was, I know it's a big deal from you folks, but I was, was hoping we'd have more, more sidewalk space there. So I do sort of really appreciate that. I have some, some concerns, I think, and maybe, I don't know if it's, it's not really for this conversation now, but just regarding the traffic flow on Center Street, and making it one-way or not making it one-way, just what that's going to do. If it's, if it's, if it's one-way as we proposed, is it all of Center Street from DMV all the way down to Morris Avenue? And if it is, that, that means, that is a lot of ramifications for that entire area, especially around, around rush hour. I know, specifically, I go to, to a business that's in, in the neighboring building, and I look to get off of Mar, at about four o'clock on a Friday usually every week. And I look to get off Morris Avenue as quickly as possible, because it just backs up forever. Not to mention, you know, people who are supposed to be turning right onto Caldwell there, who don't, and then cause more trouble. So that's not a tough conversation now, but it might not be a bad idea to, to have a discussion with, with a traffic engineer, just to think about, about some of those issues.
So I just want to, I just want to refresh your recollection about that issue.
Yeah.
So we did testify about this, I guess it was three years ago now.
Four.
Four years ago.
Four years.
Time flies around. Four years ago, I guess December is the magic month, because I think it was late December.
It was the last meeting in December.
And, and we did put in testimony, and we did actually, I think, I think we have redevelopment in place.
Yeah, for that matter, maybe it was an, it could have even been my idea.
I didn't want to say that.
But, but, yeah, yeah, and I totally, now you know what it's like to live with me. But I am concerned, it's so crowded there. The, the Together North Jersey Plan proposed some other streetscape items along Morris Avenue, like a bump out at that Caldwell place.
We tried to do that.
I, I don't want to Milburnize our Morris Avenue by any means, but that would be terrible.
Yeah, we removed the bump out.
Okay. Anyway, it's four years later, maybe it's worth, you know, just another look real quick, and, and make sure we're not, we're not screwing something up that we don't intend to.
How do you want me to look at it?
I don't know.
The engineer's going to come back with the same report. So how do you, I mean, you say look at it, tell me what you're thinking.
What's, so, so are, is, is the one-way of, of center going to be from Morris Avenue all the way to the library? So if you're coming in off of Mountain, you're not going to be able to turn right to get into, because you have the town parking lot?
And that's one-way in, it's the only way into the parking lot.
David, was it one-way?
Well, no, you can't enter over, over by Mountain Avenue to get into that parking lot. Now, there's a do not enter sign.
Right.
To park for the library, you have to go all the way around, pass DMV, turn right, and go in that far, that far entrance. Right? So that can't be one-way.
This would be two-way to here.
It has to be two-way to there. And then that affects the businesses like in Zuber's building right over there, for anyone getting into their parking lot, has to now be on Mar, has to now wait, you can't get through a backstreet, has to go Morris Avenue in a rush hour, wait, and, and fight their way through to, let's say, someone going to the revive gym to work out on Friday at four o'clock.
Asking, I'm asking how you want to play it.
Well.
I hear you.
I'm going to make you happy, that's my job.
I hear you.
It's not the engineer.
Appreciate that.
What do we need for a street to be two-way? I don't know how wide it is.
In width?
Yeah.
Need the right width? More than twenty-four feet, depending upon the parking outside.
I'm just saying, with the parking, just let us know next time what the width would be compared to the end of the car, you know what I mean?
No, I don't, say it again.
You know.
Yeah, it's twenty-four feet, we're twelve-foot travel length, you can, you can pinch it down a little bit, ten and ten sometimes with backing out, so.
Twenty-four is good.
So we've looked, yeah, ten and ten minimum.
Technically, we could make it a two-way street. Technically, I'm just saying.
You can't make it a two-way street, then you realize you're impacting parking that we fought.
That's right. Well, no, no, with the parking, you just.
Well, you can't do, you can't do, you can't do that type of parking.
Yeah, because you can't be heading towards.
Yeah, you can't.
Towards Morris Ave.
One-way.
And be able to park on Center Street.
I just want to make sure you, you understand what I'm asking.
You eliminate that parking, you'd have to give more spots somewhere else, and that from a retail standpoint.
Wait for retail, retail goes into the lot.
Or you're, or you're forcing the drivers to circle around onto Morris Avenue.
Right.
That's a problem that David's concerned.
Or what's happening is they're actually going through the parking lot, and they're going to cut through the parking lot from Caldwell to Center, and make a right onto Center to avoid.
Just, how many parkings on Center Street anyway?
Fourteen, I believe.
Five, four, four.
So was it eight and five, thirteen?
Thirteen. Well, I mean, that's for the governing body to decide.
Fifteen.
Right.
Yeah, so fifteen, I mean, so.
If you straighten that out, you're going to lose ten of those.
Yeah, well, that's fine, and if they want to give you ten other spots somewhere else to mitigate that, that's.
You know.
Yeah, but it's not ideal.
I know, it's not retail.
But unless you're, unless.
Yeah.
Unless you're a citizen of the municipality, and just someone who drives through your town quite often, you know, I'm making this, if I'm going on twenty-four, I'm making this movement down here, and I'm going out that way. If I'm going on Morris Avenue to Milburn, I'm making this movement and going that way.
You're going to have to make a look now, sorry.
Unless I'm going to DMV, I never.
Never go there.
I never make that movement, I mean.
You don't, but I do every week.
I know, unless you're a local resident, I'm saying, if you look at the traffic counts, because.
The most important thing to this board is our local residents.
I, I know, but I'm saying is.
Now we're going to invite a hundred and forty more of them in.
But I, I kind of like having, creating a street scene for this project, and making this, you're making, you're softening this project. By making it a one-way, you're softening it. So if I'm going to park here, I can still come in here, here, and go in that way. I can come in here, go in that way. So it's only one way to here.
It's only one way up to the top part of the street.
That's correct. It's only one way here.
That, that, that their buildings, you know where, where Zuber's is right there?
Yeah.
That parking lot is in back of that building. Right now, all those businesses that are there, someone can come in from Morris and park in that building, someone can come in up, up Center and park in that building. It's changed, it's affected their businesses, and that people have to only, can now only get to them via Morris Avenue unless.
They'll probably do what I'll do, which is go on the wrong way.
That being said, they were noticed when this application was heard in 2015, and we're not here, and did not have an issue with it apparently, because they did not come and comment.
Right.
And already have buses.
We have to get 204 people living next door who are going to walk across the street.
Walk across the street and go to their businesses.
You got buses to park in there, coming in from Morris Ave, I'll push them out.
Anything further, Andrew?
I just want to make sure, what are you asking us?
Well, I, I hear you. I'm, I'm, I'm just lamenting the fact that this, this, no matter what we do here, I think this is going to make traffic issues worse than they currently are here.
You're increasing, obviously.
If we can keep it two and find parking elsewhere, you know, keep it two-way and find some parking elsewhere, which we have to talk, again, this is a big puzzle, then we have to talk.
But then you're impacting the retail.
What you're saying is.
You're impacting the retail, which there's too much of.
They can, they can rank out.
Way too much.
If you want to go to retail, if, if you go two ways, and for parking, you can go in municipal lot right there.
Yeah.
You go to municipal on Morris Avenue, you can go, I mean, there's parking all around.
I'm not impacting retail.
I agree.
I don't want to say we're agnostic, because that's probably maybe not true, we probably would prefer this design, but it's not, it's not a killer. I mean, you guys say you're going to put five parking spaces there instead of fifteen, and you're not going to park on an angle, and we, I mean, we'll work it out. You can give us a bigger variance on our parking. You know, we, we've already had the conversation around parking, we're overparked. So we can have, we can have, you know, less parking. I mean, there are a lot of ways you can solve this out.
On, on, on a recent development project we saw here, the town brought in its own traffic engineer to take a look at that project. Can the town do the same thing here? It's now, four years later, things change, traffic goes up, down, now we have another, two other projects that we didn't consider, weren't even, even figments of our imagination four years ago.
Except that when we approved those applications, this project was, was accounted for in their traffic studies. So we've already been through this three times. And all we're doing, we're make-working right now.
Yeah, we just make.
Yeah. What do I, what do I do with this?
Technically, when you.
The board knows we've done it here.
Technically, when you.
We've had a lot of meetings, we've had a lot.
It's my business.
It's time to put this thing to bed and move on, and let them break ground.
We'd like to get known, obviously, you know, every project, you can tweak it up. I mean, the reality is that, you know, every month, every four years a month, if we're not putting taxes on it, but you're looking at that up defense.
Hey, look.
I wouldn't have brought that up.
All right, call the bell, just call the bell.
Sell anything to a clerk.
Kidney punches.
He skipped over you.
Hold on, I.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
I just want to make sure.
You were, you were mayor for a long time, so I apologize.
I just want to make sure that, that we have a ribbon cutting on this building that'll bear my name, Barnet Heights.
All right, let's move on.
The only thing that I want to say.
Put a flag. Did you hear that, Mr.?
The only thing I want to say about with the parking act, wherever we give you spaces, the cars have to be moved by head of the car, start hanging into the parking area, because you're going to get, they're going to get tickets. That's one agreement that I know that has happened. You can't park right front. On a Saturday, Sunday is different.
You know what, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I remember, I know we worked on this parking with, with county council four years ago, and it's in redevelopment. I don't remember exactly what it says.
I actually do, I was mayor then. I know, I remember exactly.
I don't remember what it said.
There's an agreement, and it says what it says.
Yeah, it says what it says.
So let's not rehash it, let's go.
I look forward to the project, unfortunately, I hope the Center Street does not become a one-way. I live in that neighborhood, this neighborhood, and I use that all the time. Sorry.
You have to go to the light.
I might have missed this in the initial presentation, but is there any kind of card access for residents to get in, or?
Yes.
Okay, so there's going to be a gate?
Yes.
And nobody else from the.
It's not even card access, it's a license plate reader that will look at your license plate, so you can't even share their card reader with your buddy.
Right, but I'm saying, to prevent vehicles who are unauthorized to even enter the parking lot, technology exists?
Yes. So it exists that it reads your license plate, and if your license plate is not in the, in the computer, then it doesn't open the door for you.
Okay, perfect, cool. All right, so, so here's.
All right, so, so here's what I want to do. There's some stuff that you guys have to work through over the next month. I'm going to carry this application with no further notice. It's actually Thursday, December fifth, because the township has their holiday party December fourth.
Does it make some sense just to show a little bit of the architecture, just to get some feedback, or you want not?
No, because there are other renderings, and I want the board, and I want the opportunity for our planner and you to work together, and I want to make sure he had no opportunity to work through it and make sure that it's correct. So there are the renderings.
That's, that's up to the board. I mean, I'm comfortable with them presenting, but that's completely up to the board.
We'll wait, we'll wait. So that you work with the governing body over the next four weeks?
Happy to.
To resolve the.
What would you do with it?
Well, reach out to the township attorney and, and work with the governing body on, or Matt Jessup actually would be the best person to work with, because he's the redevelopment attorney, to work through the parking, the one-way, so that when you come back here, there's a little more clarity on that. Either the governing body has a meeting prior to that, that we get the renderings, the five renderings that were discussed at the subcommittee, especially the view coming from Caldwell to the back of the building, so the board can understand the underground parking design.
We have, we have.
And then, that, if Mike, between now and then, if you can go out and go on Fridays and get some idea of what's going on in that area with everything, you know, with Center Street and stuff, so you can give the board your opinion. You live here, so you have to live with it, too. So, so unless there's anything further from the board, please work with, not yet, please work with our professionals over the next four weeks to clean up the application, so that way on December fifth, we can move the application.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm going to carry it for the public's portion. I'm going to carry this application to Thursday, December fifth, at seven PM in this very room, with no further notice.
Correct.
And.
Can I wave, whatever?
Wave it all. Your name.
Your timing.
My timing.
Your name, you have to give it to us.
First off, you don't get an automatic approval because you have all the materials. So.
I don't know about that.
The board basically, well, you're missing stuff according to the chairman. Do you want to take that position, Al?
I'm, I'm being a nice guy today. I'm being a nice guy today.
I'm being incredibly nice.
You are. You're being a really good guy.
No, I won't be there.
You will be the first application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
I like this guy.
So we have one other matter, which we have to go in closed session. We're going to do very, very, very quickly.
Did you tie it or? Or grandfather?
Can you put it, put it on without?
You're still on the camera.
You have to, you can't.
Take care of it in December.
When was this noticed? You know, was this noticed? What was opening night of this application? Was it the freaking? Michael?
Michael, when did you deem the application?
When did you deem this application complete?
We're not within 120 days.
Hold on, hold on. I'm not even there.
No, it would have, it would have been after the preliminary reviews.
I think it wasn't deemed complete.
Thank you.
Maybe tonight, and it was potentially deemed complete tonight because you didn't get all the additional information that you needed. Is that correct, or?
Yes.
All right, so it's a conditionally. Hey, Al?
No, I'm going tomorrow night.
You poked the bear, and you're technically not even complete yet. We don't have the additional information out on the floor. So you're, you're conditionally not, on night, night time.
So, so what I'm saying.
I've got a little girl.
We've been asked five renders.
Imagine.
So I don't want to, you know, you render it as a part, but I don't, I'm not, I don't want to go there. Like, just tell me what I can do, and I'll give it to you.
The answer is, we, we requested additional information. We just got stuff, and these guys just did the review. I don't know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm deemed incomplete, because I want to, I want